Press it again.
Yeah.
The rise of the political allegiance, the flag of the United States of America, and to a party for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll call, please.
Dr. Bidwell here, Mr. Ferris.
Here.
Mr. Gilmore.
Here.
Mr. Hadley.
Here.
Mr. Hobo.
Here.
Mr. Vasali.
Here.
Mr. Farisi.
Here. Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight is our consent agenda. There is no personnel, personnel agenda. Uh, the agenda is there, does any board member wish to pull any items off of the consent?
Yes, I'd like to pull items two-one-one, two-two, or two-one, two-two, and two-three.
Okay, any other items we pulled?
I'm sorry, I missed both. Items one-one, one-two, one-three, sorry.
Okay, are we talking two-point-one-one?
Yes.
Two-point-one-two or two-point-one-three?
We got our points right, yes.
Alright. So basically, item two-point-one, seeing big enough at the moment.
I could've just said it.
Alright. Alright, so other than item two-point-one, do any board members wish to remove any other items from the consent agenda at this point? Now, there is, if needed a moment, please could do it, but when you're ready, there's a suggested motion on the first page of your material, or a board member. Move.
Move to wave every name up and approve the consent agenda as present in the board agenda except for item two-point-one.
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Bidwell, seconded by Mr. Farisi. Roll call, please.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Farisi?
Yes.
Mr. Hobo?
Yes.
Mr. Hadley?
Yes.
Mr. Vasali?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, then the next item on our agenda would be our, or we need to, we have a separate motion with respect to item two-point-one. We have a motion regarding two-point-one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item two-point-one, moved by Mr. Farisi, seconded by Dr. Bidwell. Roll call, please.
Mr. Farisi?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Vasali?
Yes.
Mr. Hobo?
Yes.
Mr. Hadley?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Mr. Skeen.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to our recognition.
Tonight, we're honored to have students and staff to recognize here tonight. First, we're going to recognize our special Olympics competitors. This summer, L Y Special Olympics Summer Games, the L G seven to nine, they only take University Normal. Four thousand athletes, and unified partner completed the set of sports, along with seventeen hour coaching, three thousand volunteers who gave their effort. Today, we're going to recognize our special Olympians, their outstanding contribution to this district. Then we recognize our National Merit Scholar. We have five high school students that have been commended students in the 2020 National Merit Scholarship Program. They've demonstrated outstanding athletic achievement, look forward to their continued growth and success throughout the district. Commended students placed among the top fifty thousand scores in the entire country, out of one point six billion base school students who took the S H E National Merit Scholar to fall. We're talking about the very best of the best, we're going to honor tonight from our high schools. And then there are those who excel award recipients. This past weekend, Saturday, the state Board of Education honored the those who excelled recipients around the state, and we have a certain number of categories to look at tonight, and we're going to honor them through the process. The administration asked the board to approve that recommendations.
Okay, with respect to the recognition, there is a suggested motion on the eighty-three of your materials, or in the board report.
Move to introduce the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Education of Woodstock Community Unit School District Two Hundred wishes to recognize the contributions of these individuals, whereas District Two Hundred has benefited as a result of these accomplishments. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Woodstock Community Unit School District Two Hundred hereby bestows special recognition, certificate of achievement on behalf of the citizens of the district.
Motion by Mr. Farisi, do we have a second? Second. Seconded in by Mr. Hadley. Roll call, please.
Mr. Farisi?
Yes.
Mr. Hadley?
Yes.
Mr. Vasali?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Hobo?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Alright, so we're going to announce your names. We ask you to come up front, get your certificate, and stay up front, and we'll get a picture of each group. But first, we're going to have our special Olympians. So first, we have Sarah Bone, the powerlifting, bent press gold, deadlift gold, and combination gold. Share with us.
Grace Pronte, rhythmic gymnastics, ball silver, rope bronze, ribbon bronze, hoopin' bronze, all-around bronze. Nicollette Tarante, powerlifting, bent press gold, deadlift gold, squat gold, combination gold. Nicollette. Alright, Shawna Harvey, powerlifting, bent press gold, deadlift gold. Avriana Hernandez, track and field, running long jump, silver. Kalani King, gymnastics, rope gold, ribbon gold. Madison Kanola, gymnastics, rope gold, plump gold. Mila Moros, gymnastics, ball, rope, ribbon, hoopin', all-around. Maggie Offlin, powerlifting, bent press silver, deadlift gold, combination silver. To the man's lad, gymnastics, ball silver, ribbon silver. Blake Sweetatch.
It's Blake Sweetatch. It's out of hand.
Blake, great job, congratulations.
Well, it was Joey's idea to help us raise money, help us raise money to donation. While we do it financially, and we did for a living, but we're all here to add money.
I was so strong. What's funny about me?
Nothing.
Alright, Abby Dangy, gymnastics, ribbon. I need a picture. Harris, come on up. Please come forward. These are our coaches here, these are our special Olympic coaches. Alright, now onto our National Merit Scholar Program. So we have five students to honor tonight, who are all commended students for the National Merit Scholarship Program. First, from Woodstock High School, Caroline Arnold. Also from Woodstock High School, Susan Frenshaw. Also from Woodstock High School, Kara Ordal. From Woodstock North, Keegan Given. Alright, so, picture, please. I like huge round of applause. We have staff recognition, every year, as this Board of Education puts on those who excel programs, we now make people in a variety of areas, and in their honor, at a banquet, we have a meet-down. We're honoring them again today. First off, Lisa Adams, our secretary, the assistant superintendent, on the education. Lisa totally makes the question the part of the show, she's invaluable, and we appreciate everything she does every day. Early career educator, Lauren Boyd, who's a fourth grade dual teacher at Woodstock Elementary School, and she's an amazing teacher, we're so happy to have Lauren. For our teacher mentor, she was a retired math professor, Deb Gill, who's an amazing student, took Woodstock North High School, beloved by our students. I don't think Deb would live tonight, right? I'm not sure I saw Jackie then, but our community volunteer, she's huge for our incubator program at Woodstock High School, although she has students at Woodstock North throughout the district, Jackie Feschial. Alright, from Woodstock North, amazing guidance counselor at Woodstock North High School, she helps students all the time with scheduling and issues, does an amazing job for our publisher, Jessica Tielander. Alright, and then, we have two of our principals. They started a community connection team, so they, actually, they have a presentation coming up, is that one? Thursday, I think it's going to be Thursday, where they, they go out and reach out to our community, to different parts of the community, we don't see as much as, like, school, so they're always waiting for people to come to us, they've gone to that, the parents, and trying to meet their needs, maybe within building that relationship with the school. So, we have the principals, first Trisha Bogah. Do you want to do a picture? How many of our parents did it? Okay, the next item on our agenda is communications. Uh, we've taken a short break at this point, for those of you who came very early, before we were in the run for issues, we slipped out. You're welcome to stay, we'd love to have you, but you may not want to. So, we do hope to follow up on you one-two, and then we will continue with our, um, we have. Thanks for coming, so much, congratulations. our communication section. This is an opportunity for members of the public, staff, and the board to address the, um, board at this point. Did we have any news tonight? Okay, uh, we'll start with the public communicating comments. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the board at this time? Any of us in the public? Okay, then we'll move into staff comments. Are there any members of the staff that wish to address the board at this time? Any more comments? Just as a quick follow-up to last week's work session, uh, we did get a request to evaluate the session. Uh, I'd like to kind of do a unified response, so if anybody has any comments regarding the work session, or they'd like to pass on, uh, do something else, and I will synchronize and then do the evaluation. Uh, any other staff, uh, board comments? Okay, we'll do this super attention.
We had a happy school today, students all filled up, uh, the teachers today in the afternoon, and all worked, took part in the baking, high class, professional development this afternoon. All the mentioned teachers had a choice, there's a number of outstanding options, middle high school teachers worked in content area, District Y today had topics in the faculty department, some in content area. All these activities are tied to school equipment plans, and we're going to hear about shortly tonight. We're going to thank all of our staff, the hard work, meditation, professional learning, trusting kids, spent a lot of time in the department planning today, our principal loved working up today, so thank you everybody that's been part in planning our activities today. As you can feel in the air, now we're ending our fall season for athletics and activities, one of the most successful districts in the district. High schools combined with five conference championships this fall, Woodstock North tennis, and Shemway Conference Championship, won a sectional championship this past weekend. So, a great season for athletics. As we turn from fall to winter, we have a number of activities starting up soon, and the first is opening our fear season with coast-tail from Mr. Dickens, Friday, remember, at Woodstock North High School, if it's available. If we end early enough tonight, and you're really quiet, you're going to sneak in the orchestra concert in the auditorium, too, which is always a big thing. Lot to great things going on this fall, we're going to be able to.
Okay, then we'd like to move into our monitoring report, which is the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school.
Alright, so, good evening, tonight we're going to hear from some of our principals. Each year on the scene, as you've got a floor before you understand that school recruitment process is a crucial part of what we do. Uh, each principal has a school recruitment within their site, and really goes over all the data from academic achievement to student growth, family, community engagement, and any component that we look at in our school is a really good better our students. So tonight, we are lucky enough to have two principals at the elementary level that are going to work with us. Dawn is going to talk a little bit about Play Academy, we have two school principals and two high school principals that are going to highlight one of the initiatives that is happening at that level, so if you guys can come up, I'll let you know. We're going to start with our elementary level.
So, one of the biggest initiatives that we're working on as an elementary team is our thirty-minute intervention period, and the most exciting part and the biggest change for this period is that it's an all hands on deck team approach, that we're looking at individual students as readers to really plan purposeful instruction. So, when looking at our students who are below grade level, they're getting a research-based intervention that is targeting other foundational skills, comprehension, vocabulary, and then, on the flip side of that, our students who are at grade level or above grade level, we're enriching them, so, you know, meeting them where they're at and giving them more opportunities. So, some of the things that we're doing are novel studies, research product, projects, and wordwork. So, just as an elementary team, we're really excited to continue to tweak this period, and continue to just meet all students where they're at as readers, so.
Another large initiative that we have implemented at the elementary level is our Everyone Reads program, where our second graders that are not quite at grade level yet in reading, receive additional research-based interventions for one hour after the regular school day ends. And, uh, we have approximately a hundred and fifty second graders in this program, District Y, and I met with Ava, she's a second grader in my building, and asked her what she loves about Everyone Reads, and I'd like you to listen to her response.
Ava, what do you like about the Everyone Reads program?
It's where you like to learn to read, and it's like you're not stuck on words. When you're trying to read, it's like you're helping it, it's like when you're starting to read, you're getting better and better, and you're not getting down. No, I want you to be proud.
Very moving. Uh, at our middle school level, Stephanie Hall?
So last year, we talked to you and shared some things about our ABID program that we started last year. This year, we expanded that program. Um, we talked to you last year about our elective class, which is the student skills we've been focusing on. Now those students have become leaders in our seventh grade classrooms, um, we brought a new group of sixth grade students into that. In terms of our staff development, we've really been working on core strategies from the ABID program to share with our staff. We both have a site team of teachers that have been training those strategies, and they help us during our late start and professional development. And both buildings were tracking those strategies that we're using and the frequency we're using them. Uh, so this is an example of the north with tracker, where it has links where teachers can go and get resources that they can use in their classroom, which is important to
Uh, you've also heard us talk about the past couple of years about the literacy curriculum we have at the middle school level. Uh, after three years of implementing this curriculum, uh, teachers, uh, really dove in the data and dove into what the program, uh, offered, and they said that they really wanted to strengthen their support for students in writing. Uh, so because of this, we, we looked into adding and intensifying our support for writing, and, um, we've integrated new units of study in with the current literacy curriculum that we do have. Um, what you're seeing in our literacy instruction now is a lot of very specific feedback given to students on their writing, and the units of study focus on narrative writing, argumentative writing, and informational writing for students. Um, so you're going to see a lot of, uh, you're going to see a whole mini lesson, and then students breaking out into small differentiated groups to support their specific level, and while students are doing this, teachers are able to provide very authentic, specific feedback to those students' quality of writing.
Abby Dangy?
Clay, what I wanted to focus on tonight is basically the social module, who made some big changes within the building. We moved our elementary classrooms down into the middle school classrooms, and vice versa. Um, the rationale for that was it's much quieter down there, related services fit this down there, and we were able to put in a sensory floor for the children. We also added out into the playground, playground equipment, accessory boards out there, and it's also, it's kind of a three-year process that myself and special education were working together to make sure that it's really nice up there for the students. And I do want to add, last year, we sent thirteen, fourteen students back to the middle school full-time, and graduated four seniors. This year, we've already sent back three, I have nine days, maybe another one, maybe I have some extra, so, we're good there.
At the high school level, one of the things that both high schools are focused on this year is making sure that all the students are on grade level in algebra by the end of their freshman year. So, we implemented a curriculum called Agile Minds. We have about fifty freshman students at each school, participate in a two-period block with exactly the same algebra standards, everything the same way that the other kids are getting it, but the curriculum is written such that it continually spirals and reuses, and gives them two hours a day in algebra. So far, we've seen that the kids are making remarkable progress, and we feel that all the students that we have in this block will actually be on track to algebra by the time they're waiting for their freshman year.
And from the high school level's perspective, we have seen a new program rolling that's become, uh, become one-to-one called No Reading. This is a software platform that allows us to do a lot of differentiation that we're not able to do previously, so it only focuses on three areas, writing instruction, grammar instruction, and target SAT standards. What's really nice about this is the peer editing.
What's really nice about this is the peer editing and self-editing process has really been fine-tuned, which is something we've struggled with trying to figure out a good way to do that previously. When it comes to the grammar instruction, it really does tailor a grammar program to the students, so rather than everyone just learning about how to use combos correctly, if the student struggles with hyphens or dashes, it tailors something specifically to that mean, rather than just the whole group. And then finally, the nice part about the program is it does specifically target SAT standards throughout the entire process as well. This has been a great program for us.
So as you can see, all the different initiatives we have at high school, middle school, elementary, Play Academy, really focus on schemes, and we're very excited to share this with you and look at what we're more excited as we show, the programs where individual practices have, so. Can we answer any questions right now?
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Larry, since this has been implemented with the reading, what have you seen, any differences? Too quick to evaluate with your kids, are the readings better than before? What can you tell us about the results?
Well, we're going to do another benchmark in December, and so that's where we'll get some solid data. But what we can say is that the students are really enjoying the time that they're there. Their needs are specifically being met, so the intervention materials are being differentiated depending upon what area of literacy they're struggling in more. And in terms of then how that carries over to small group instruction during our core time, we're seeing more connections there. So the kids are being able to, I'd say, participate more in small group, have extra practice decoding, and just feeling better about themselves as a reader. I'd say anecdotally, we can absolutely say that.
And that's a great question, but just to make sure, you know, this is a marathon, it's not a spring. So I mean, you know, at the end of this year, we hope to see results, but really, you know, long-term, at the third grade, in the fourth grade, that's, you know, and I know that's a struggle sometimes for all, we have to wait to get those kind of results, but you know, that's going to be our long-term, is, you know, can we not only get them to grade level, but keep them there, right? Because all that work, if we were to have regression then, you know, I mean, it was still good, but then, the question else we have to do, so. Great question, but you know, we're all, you know, we're not so, we're going to make a long-term commitment over, you know, two, three years, we're going to see the kind of growth, and sustain that growth.
Now we have our after-school.
Yes.
The kids say no because they don't have a ride.
We both.
We both accept. So I appreciate pretty much.
They go, yeah, their day is just an hour longer than everyone else's, but that's still considered their school.
And you know, the way we attack that was, we met with parents, every parent meetings in the spring, every parent knew it, they had to come talk about it, and we started early, so for these kids, we didn't want it to be, hey, you have to stay at the school for some reason, it was just, hey, school is perfect grade, it's an hour long. They get snapped, and you know, we try to interact in a different way, we tried to do it right away, so it was just kind of like a school year. And I mean, maybe someone could talk about that all day, the principals have, that's not practical.
It's an excellent, it's just like parents, it's part of their day. They come to school, they get snapped, they go, parents are very grateful for the extra hours, so their kids get targeted and practicing the instruction. So we feel very optimistic about the results that we can see, but not for the rest of the race.
Is it happening at every school?
Yes.
That we've looked at it forward.
Yeah, the only difference is some, the number of students, some of our interventions are doing it, we changed their hours, we start an hour later in four or six, then we have an additional classroom teacher we hired to stay because we have too many kids. A couple of smaller elementary just directions to the better side.
Any questions about any of the, any school group questions?
I do have another comment, I was surprised earlier, with math, the algebra, the all students, with the curriculum.
The students that we have, so we each have about fifty students in the two-hour block, and you feel like what we're seeing right now is those students that are getting the intensified practice, that they will be on grade level by the time of the end of the year.
Alright, thank you.
Yes.
But we chose, I mean, that isn't necessarily our fifty low students, it's fifty kids that we thought the program would be impact.
It has fifty, yeah.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure we're on the same page with that. We think we can afford fifty, we don't think necessarily we can, they're part of the class.
But if we're all, that's all, that's all, it's pretty horrible, eh?
Everyone reads, only those kids do not.
You principals are making that world a good.
We appreciate all the work.
There's no other questions, you haven't said, we're coming up with your presentation tonight. Forcing, oh, things over the course of the year.
Anyone want to touch on a quick, Pat, you know, the board and I talk a lot about teacher involvement at the building level, and school improvement teams. Anyone just want to add, the opportunity that teachers have to be involved in your building, on the school improvement process?
Talk a little bit about, we moved a lot of our school improvement process to the end of the year. Actually, our last faculty meeting is getting together and talking about our strengths and areas for growth with the staff. So everyone on our staff, after looking at data throughout the year, gets an input, and then we meet over the summer with their SIP team. But that SIP team only develops general areas for our entire building, and then it goes out to each department. And each department says, well, what does this look like in math? What does this look like in literacy, social studies, science, PEE, exploratories? And they all have that input on the action steps that they're going to take at this department, towards their area of success that they're going to identify in that.
Very similar at the elementary level. We do a lot of our planning in the spring to take a look at what worked, what we want to take to the next level. So we have a framework at the end of the year, and then our building leadership team meets, review those, we take a look at any of the other, maybe professional development things that we went to over the summer, to then finalize the, the planning. But everybody really has a say in it because we meet by grade level teams, and then our exploratory team in the spring, and then again in the fall.
I think the other thing is important is that the way the plans are written, there are checkpoints throughout, so the plan is at this beginning and end, it's all your plan, and we're constantly reevaluating where we are, and making sure that we are making the adjustments so that we can say that we've done what we said we would do, and we know what we need for next.
Good work, all our pretty young school improvement process, thank you so much. Okay, we have no unfinished business, so who are the new business? The new business tonight is the first quarter review of the 2019-2020 budget.
So we're going to start on page eighty-six, which is the education fund, we're going to focus on the box on the far right, and I just noticed that it's labeled eighteen nineteen, it should be labeled nineteen twenty, I just want to fix that. So we'll start with revenues, local revenues, property taxes, we've received forty-six point two percent of our budget, or just about seventeen point two million. And that's money is from the twenty eighteen levy, received after July first. So we received those from July through November, and then I'll start with twenty nineteen levy, that's money actually we're talking about. Under tuition, we received eight point four percent. Under interest, we received twenty-nine point three percent. Activity and admission fees, we received a little over thirty percent. Registration fees, just under twenty-five percent. And then other, which is driver's ed, brand, and his club monies, we received about twenty, just under twenty-four percent. So in total, our local revenues, we received forty-two point three percent. And then our state revenues, our general state aid, we've been receiving two payments regularly every month, so the state's been doing really good in the last, I'd say, three years now, but having that money being very regular and on time. And then the categoricals, we received one quarterly payment, and it's really last year's fourth quarter. So overall, total state revenues, we received nineteen point six percent. And federal, which is Medicaid and RIN, we received twenty-six point one percent of our budget. So total revenues, we received just over twenty-two million, or thirty-five percent. And then when we look at expenditures for the first quarter, we've spent twenty-one point three percent, or under our target of twenty-five percent. Any questions on that? The next fund is the average and maintenance fund. Again, the same scenario with the property taxes, we received forty-six point two percent. Interest earnings, we received twenty-three point seven. Activity and admission fees, which is really parking fees, we received almost sixty percent. Building rentals, nineteen percent of our budget, and then other, which is gas sales through the city, just under thirteen percent. So in total, we've received forty-four point one percent of our local revenues, and then not a number of state usually wait till late in the year to book that. And so in total, we received two point eight nine million dollars, and we received thirty-eight point nine percent of our budget. And looking at expenditures, we're about one and a half percent over our target of twenty-five percent. The own non-budget, you know, was a tight budget to begin with, and we're just going to have to watch it carefully. We did a lot of work with numbers that reflected in the budget, so I think it'll be there somehow. And then utilities, out there at the bottom, kind of small, even smaller, right? We've budgeted one point eight million, and we spent four hundred eighty-five thousand two eighty, but twenty-six point nine percent. So everything's doing really well, except the electives, a little high, and that's really frustrating because we've lowered our rates, we've lowered our consumption, but it keeps going up because they just keep charging all these fees and all regulatory items. So, I know we're doing everything we can, it's, it's really frustrating. Any questions there?
Does that explain the difference that we have up in our expenditures in terms of utilities?
It's part of it as well, yeah.
I mean, it looks like a substantially higher amount than we have done the budget in there.
Yeah.
It's somebody that wanted to have inside of their.
And then the transportation fund, same scenario with the property taxes, we've already received over forty percent of our interest earnings, our fees are thirty and a half percent. And then our other is at almost fifty-five percent, that's the bus and the mail. State categoricals, we've received twenty-five point seven percent, that's the fourth quarter from last year. So we're completely caught up from last year, and probably the first quarter came in, and I'd say before the end of the year, end of the calendar year. So total revenues are one point seven million, and we've received thirty-three point six percent. And then our expenditures, it's twenty-seven percent, so it's two percent over our target. But again, this happens every year, we buy our buses in July, we pay out a lot of money right, and like in July, and then it takes all year almost to catch up then. So there's nothing really concerning with that. Any questions? And the final piece is the insurance fund, and as of September thirtieth, we have six hundred twenty-seven thousand and twenty-nine dollars in the fund balance, and we've spent twenty-two point five percent, so we're under our twenty-five percent target.
Any questions, Teresa, regarding the budget? Okay, well, thank you for summarizing where we are at this point, and we'll move forward to the next. Thank you. It doesn't require any kind of vote. So we'll move on to our next item, which is committee reports, so any committees met since our last board meeting? Or do any committees have anything they'd like to report? Okay, if not, now other team, watch your chair. So, who? Watch your members, Teresa. Second, Mr. Hadley, roll call, please.
Mr. Teresa.
Yes.
Mr. Hadley.
Yes.
Mr. Ferris.
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mr. Wasely.
Yes.
Mr. Humble.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes. Thank you all so much.